Good evening and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters. And with me tonight, a special guest host.
Hi there, I'm Mario Selitas, a proud League of Women Voters member.
On tonight's broadcast, we have two candidates in-house, and we have a video recording of another candidate for State Board of Education District 6. And we're going to ask them some questions. And I want to thank both of you for being able to be with us live tonight. It was kind of short notice. The other candidate, Michelle Palmer, wasn't able to join us, so we did a pre-recorded video with her. But thank you both for taking time. I know that this is really the crunch time in election season, and I know that you probably have other obligations that you're rushing to fulfill as well. So, thank you again for coming out. Tonight, we have with us in studio Rebecca Plourd and Will Hickman. And tonight, we're going to be asking you some questions. Now, we haven't been able to do conversations with the candidates with the League in a couple of years because of COVID. We had restrictions, the studio was shut down. And so, of course, we always have the Voters Guide. And you and the other candidates should have received that. The Voters Guide is out. I'll talk a little bit more about that later on this evening in the program. So, we have time to learn about the two guests, and we're going to ask them some questions about themselves and issues affecting District 6 for the State Board of Education. And we're going to learn a little bit about our state educational system, I hope. So, I want to welcome all of you. And Mario, would you like to take the first few questions?
Sure, sure. And we'll start with you, Ms. Plourd, if you don't mind. Please introduce yourself and tell us a bit about who you are.
Thank you. One, thank you so much for inviting me to come out to be able to speak to those in the Houston area and share with them my dedication to the education system here in Houston. Thank you for that. My name is Rebecca Plourd. I'm a Houston transplant. My husband and my children and I moved here in 2017, just in time for Harvey. I moved here to work in Houston ISD at Chavez High School as an English II teacher, so grade 10. And I worked there for two and a half years, and then transferred to Klein ISD because my daughter has dairy allergy that's very severe, and I needed to be closer to her. And we had moved out to the Spring area. And so, I've been working in Klein ISD ever since at Klein Forest High School. I got my undergrad at University of South Florida in English Education and a minor in Literary Studies. And I just finished all of my coursework for my masters at Texas A&amp;M International University. I should be receiving that diploma in December. And my husband is Canadian. I met him when I lived out there for a bit. I have a sixth grader, she's 11, and my son is in the second grade. He's turning eight in December.
Thank you, thank you. And you, Mr. Hickman, same thing. Please tell us a bit about you, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you to League of Women Voters and Houston Media Source for having us out tonight. It's great to be able to talk to voters and people interested in education and State Board of Education and what we do. My name is Will Hickman. I'm currently serving my first term on State Board of Education District 6. And District 6 is most of Western Harris County, and we just added most of Montgomery County, so the Woodlands, Conroe, up in that direction. I'll give you a few numbers about me. I've been married 25 years. I have three kids in public school. I'm a parent's voice on the State Board of Education. I have five degrees in engineering law and Spanish, two engineering degrees from Texas A&amp;M. Then I moved here to Houston. I went to law school at night down the road at University of Houston. And a few years ago, I went back and got a Spanish degree. All of my work, I've been working as an attorney for about 20 years. And all of my work now is in South America. So, really, for me, education is preparing you to do something, and I wasn't able to do my job effectively, so I needed that preparation to go back and get a Spanish degree.
Thank you, thank you. And why don't you tell us, why is the State Board of Education important? And why did you seek to become a part of it?
Yeah, thank you, Mario. SBOE, for me, is a critical role in education. It's not the only role. We work hand-in-hand with the independent school districts. There's Klein, Tomball, Sci Fair, many within District 6 that we work with, as well as working with the legislature. So, between the three of us at those three different levels, we're implementing education policy for the state of Texas. Specifically, we do curriculum standards. I think we're going to talk about social studies. We finished science. We're about to start math. We do a lot of CTE courses, career and tech courses, and then the textbooks that are used in those courses, as well as manage the permanent school fund. So, what we're doing, in essence, is determining what the 5.5 million students in Texas have to learn. It's the minimum, it's the floor, and then teachers can add curriculum, can add other material to that. Specifically, the past chairman, Donna Bahorich, asked me to run. She worked for District 6 for eight years and then decided not to run again, and called me, and I talked to my wife and family. I researched what the State Board does, and here we are, finishing up my second year.
Thank you, thank you. And Ms. Plourd, same thing to you. Why is the State Board of Education important? And why do you want to be a part of it?
So, as a teacher, the impact that the State Board of Education has in the classroom is very significant. I actually chose last minute to run for District 6, which is why I'm a write-in candidate. I decided to run because, instead of continually sitting and saying, "I don't like how this is done, I don't like what's happening, I don't like how it's impacting my students," I chose to do something about it. There's a lot of things that are out of teachers' controls and out of students' control, and there are decisions that are being made, just like Mr. Hickman said, including legislation, right, and State Board of Education. There's a lot of decisions that are being made by people that aren't always in the classroom. And because of that, some of those decisions are not always, I'm not going to say student-focused because they are, the intentions are there to help our students, but they don't always see the impact that it has, the decision that they had made, on the students and in the learning environment. And because of that, I stepped up and said, "Let me see what I can do to help." I'm in the classroom on a regular basis. I work with parents. I work with almost all of the stakeholders that are involved, especially in District 6. And to be able to work hand-in-hand with them on a regular basis and help make decisions that impact all of the students for good in the state of Texas, as we work with all 14 other State Board of Education members, I feel like that's extremely important.
Thank you, thank you. So, there are 15 members on the board, and each of those districts represent about 2 million people each. So, how will you represent such a large number of people?
2 million is a very large number of people. And one of the things that I do for my students and my parents is I am there to listen with the intent to act. And I hold that same thing true with the 2 million people within District 6. I am there to listen with the intention to act. Not just act for what one person says, but act for the betterment of everyone in conjunction with the 14 other members of the State Board of Education. Because District 6 is not the only district that is there, and we do have to work together. And so, I think, just plain and simple, I intend to listen with the intent to act.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Hickman, how do you represent almost 2 million people?
We are about to find out. I'll be on the ballot. They can select me or any of the other candidates running. These are the largest districts except statewide. We are two Senate districts, two congressional districts. That said, my phone number and my email are on my website. We're also on the SBOE part of the TEA website. People come and testify, so we hear from lots of the public. So, I hear from lots of District 6 residents and others from around the state. And then, we have to listen and make a decision. We hear from everyone all across the spectrum, and we have to, like Ms. Plourd just said, we have to then work with our fellow board members and decide, how are we going to make a decision on this issue? What I will say is, 90-plus percent of the decisions we make are 15-0 votes. And in general, education is not a partisan issue. If you're looking, what's in the best interest of the students? How do we best prepare Texas students for their future? 90-plus percent of the time, we're all aligned on the State Board. We have a professional board, we work well together, we're collegial. I think we all like each other, and it's a great relationship when we're in Austin. But the 10% is why we're on the news. That's what's exciting, that's when the boardroom is packed. And for those issues, we, like I said, have to listen to everyone and then decide what we think is best. The voters at District 6 hired me two years ago to do this volunteer job. I'm making myself available to do it again, to be hired, or maybe I'm not the best choice, and someone else, they'd prefer someone else to be hired instead.
Well, one of the responsibilities of the State Board of Education is to oversee the $56 billion Permanent School Fund. In 2019, the Houston Chronicle ran a series criticizing some of the way that the permanent fund was being run and how it was being administered and overseen. And so, the legislature recently enacted some new measures, a new corporation to kind of run the board, the permanent fund. So, my question then is, on the board, how do you see you and the other members managing that permanent school fund in the future? Ms. Plourd will start with you.
Yeah, so, $56 billion is a lot to manage. And one of the things that I am a huge proponent of is accountability. And I believe 100% in being able to hold everyone accountable for their jobs that they have signed up to do or been appointed to do. I have no problem disclosing when others are not doing their jobs, because that's all part of accountability. And I would hope that others would also hold me just as accountable. And so, as far as managing, I believe there are about 14 of the board, State Board of Education members, that are part of different committees within that fund. And so, should I be one of those on the committee, then accountability is my ultimate goal, making sure that those funds are managed appropriately and legally and in the best interest of what its intent is, to help education within the state of Texas.
All right, well, thank you very much. Mr. Hickman?
Yeah, the Permanent School Fund is massive. It's a $56 billion endowment. Specifically for me, I have 20-plus years of investment experience. I really enjoy talking to the experts who are managing the Permanent School Fund for the students of Texas. I work on billion-dollar deals as a corporate attorney. And we recently had a merger that was from the legislation you mentioned with, the land commissioner manages money, the State Board of Education manages money. It only made sense to merge all that money together into the new PSF Corporation. It has a nine-director board. Five of those are members of the State Board of Education PSF Committee, so those committee members roll right in. The chairman of the State Board of Education brought me in to review the merger agreement. That's the sort of thing I do at work, work with the council for the PSF Corp. So, that was kind of a good role for me with my legal experience. But it manages, we, the State Board, manage the investments and the allocations. Should we have more equities or more bonds, more alternative investments, manage the risk. And we just voted on a $1.5 billion distribution at our last meeting. So, all of the press you saw was about social studies, but I think much more important was a $1.5 billion that goes in the available school fund for the kids of Texas. So, we have to balance the current needs of the state versus the future needs of growth and inflation and decide how much of the, it's just like if you're retired, how much can we spend today versus how much are we taking away from the future? So, that's, for me, one of my favorite parts of the board meeting is talking about the Permanent School Fund. I think some of my colleagues, their eyes glaze over, but I get excited with the big numbers and talking to the experts and hearing about the investments.
Well, let me jump back and follow up with a question related to something you mentioned earlier. You said that 90% of the time, I thought this was an interesting comment, 90% of the time, the 15 board members agree. However, you know, there was a movie, there was a lot of newspaper involved, the President of the United States, US senators made comments the last time, 10 years ago, when the board took up social studies and science. Now, you weren't there at the time, so I'm not trying to hold you accountable for that, you saw the movie. So, recently, recently, and this is of interest to me because I'm a professional historian, social studies was on the agenda and the social studies curriculum. And so, over the summer, there were people coming in, people giving testimony. You had groups of teachers assemble to go over and help revise the process. Previously, and I'm going to add a little personal thing here, I sat on the revisions committee, streamlining committee it was called, several years ago, to try to cut back on the curriculum. Schoolteachers know that one of the problems with the curriculum, it is a very good curriculum, I will say this, right? But it was, felt that it was very heavy, very burdensome, and people just didn't have enough time to cover everything. And so, this year again, you know, the State Board of Education took up revisions on social studies, including revising the sequence. That was one of the things on the agenda, was to revise the sequence of history courses in elementary and middle school. So, how important is this role of curriculum oversight? And how are either of the candidates, whoever gets elected, how do you plan on working with the other 14 members on these sometimes controversial issues? Ms. Plourd, we'll start with you.
So, curriculum is extremely important, especially as an English teacher. Sorry. I know that curriculum is so important as we go to teach our children, our students, how to prepare for what is to come after, be it trade, be it college, be it straight into the workforce, whatever it is, we want to be able to have them ready for that. And oftentimes, we can find that some students are not ready from coming before us. And so, that curriculum is extremely important as far as aligning, the vertical alignment is what they call, back and forth. And one of the things that I have found is making sure that that curriculum is accessible to teachers and students, because sometimes, we have access to textbooks that just aren't practical with use in the classroom. And so, making sure that that curriculum is accessible to teachers and students and even parents, so that they can contribute in their children's education, is monumental as far as what can be achieved in the lives of our students. But, not counter to that, but coupled with that are the graduation requirements. They go hand-in-hand, which the State Board of Education is also responsible for. So, having that curriculum coupled with the graduation requirements and making sure that what we are asking them to teach within the curriculum also matches up with what we are asking them to complete before graduation, that's everything in a nutshell. And so, that is taken with the utmost sense of urgency, because without that, what is happening in the classroom?
Mr. Hickman?
Let me tell you, Texas social studies story. So, we started with an old framework, the old TEACs, I guess that you worked on the streamlining for. And where we spent most of our time was K through 8. There weren't major changes to the framework. And what we did, the old framework had 4th and 7th grade Texas, 5th and 8th grade US history. We adopted a new framework and sent that to the workgroups, which had K through 2, add some more substance, then do a chronological 3rd through 8th grade. 3rd through 5th grade was world history, 6th through 8th grade was US and Texas. The problem we ran into was a math problem. We had three years for US and Texas in 6th through 8th grade, and you asked about the 2 million people, I heard from them, and the rest of Texas. The rest of Texas wanted two years of Texas and two years of US. So, we had a problem with the framework. I developed a new framework. I worked with lots of people in the district and around the state, which used the existing Workgroup F material for K through 2. That was adding a lot of substance. We didn't have much substance in social studies, K through 2. 3rd and 6th grade, using a lot of the Workgroup F material for world. 4th and 7th being US, 5th and 8th being Texas history. So, you're scaffolding two times through, world, US, Texas, world, US, Texas, 3rd through 8th grade. And that was actually voted 10 to 2 at the last meeting. So, the vast majority of the board liked that, the new framework. And then, we voted to delay. The reason for the delay, for me, is we now will allow Texas to comment. Does this framework make sense? Does it not make sense? And I've heard every variation of flip this year with this year. And once that's done, then we can go back to the workgroups and have them kind of fill in the framework with the TEACs. But before we were ready to adopt Workgroup F TEACs, we needed the right framework, and that's why we paused. So, that's what happened at the last meeting.
So, when will we take this up again?
We've delayed until 2025, but I don't think it will take that long. We will take it up again when we're finished with math. So, as soon as math is done, we're going to come back to social studies. The proclamations, which, a proclamation is when we issue textbooks, the proclamations aren't really delayed, because we have science and health. We're kind of worked on some of that last time, and the K through 8 science for this time. And then, we have a year with no proclamation, and then the next one up will be social studies. So, I don't think we're losing a lot in terms of implementing the new K through 8 in the classroom, but we're just going to math and hearing feedback from Texas on the new framework.
So, you know, as someone who has worked on the State Board, and I'm actually a historian of the development of public education, so it's, you know, something that I take a lot of interest in. And I've got to say, this is the first time we've had a State Board of Education election that we've covered in conversations with the candidates. Not because we haven't thought it was interesting, or, but you know, sometimes there's a lot of candidates on the elections, you know, especially when we get all the city council members and the various congressional districts and everything. And we have to pick and choose. And fortunately, this election season, we were able to invite State Board of Education candidates to come on, because I do think it is an important issue. It's one of those issues that really affects everybody, even though it doesn't get a lot of attention. You probably don't get many calls until the news is covering something controversial that you're doing. So, it's kind of a, you're kind of unsung heroes whenever you're running and whenever you're serving on the board.
Or villains.
Or villains, right. So, as a school teacher, I think that dealing with curriculum gives you some insight, and as a parent and as somebody who's served on the board, you both have deep insight. And I do want to come back to something that you said earlier that I think is true. When I looked at the curriculum and when I served on it, everybody complains about the curriculum, and says, "Oh, these kids aren't learning anything." There's really a lot in the curriculum, and a lot of it is good. Now, there's a time question, and people, so let me ask both of you this. People often say, "Well, the Finnish school system is the best," and they always tout the Finnish school system. So, several years ago, we went to Finland and met with the school board, the state school board people. And he showed us the social studies curriculum. It's two pages. Our curriculum is about 15 to 20. And I just know the social studies. I'm not, I don't know about English or other things, but a lot of people, and what happens is a lot of people want a lot of things put in there. Do you think that we can streamline the curriculum? If we say that this country, and there's a lot of reasons why they're different, it's really comparing apples and oranges, but they have a very streamlined curriculum, and the teachers have a lot more authority. Here, we have, it seems like we want to make sure the teachers are teaching everything. So, where do we draw that line, and how do we get a much more teachable curriculum? And let's start with you, since you kind of dealt with this, and you've dealt with it too from a different perspective.
Yeah, the new framework that we adopted, I really like the chronological approach. And some of my colleagues say, "Don't say story," but it is. If you look at US history, it's the American story. And fitting all of the facts and figures and important events, and then that's the issue, is the streamline, what's important enough to include. And that will be the discussion at the State Board, is who's important enough and who's not important enough. I think Hillary Clinton was stricken during the streamlining process, and that was in the news, just one I remember. So, I think, with that said, I have a first-grade teacher, is a friend of mine. She said, "We have to teach this individual, and every time, we have to Google who they are." No one knows, none of the teachers know who they are, the kids don't know who they are. And I think it's someone's pet project to put this person in, and then it's in the curriculum forever, for another 10 years until we do a review. So, my pledge is to look through the TEACs for US history, for Texas history, tell the story at grade-level appropriate, 3rd grade or 8th grade, whatever we're working on, and include those people and events that make sense in the narrative, not just throwing in random individuals or random events that don't fit. I don't think kids learn well that way, of a random list of people that are not interrelated, and it's not building or scaffolding or spiraling. So, that's how I would answer that.
Education is best received when it is personalized to the learner. And so, in my head, as I picture the standards for Finland, it's probably very broad, and it allows the teacher to then fine-tune it for personalized learning. Where here, you have the reverse. It is very specific, and that opportunity for personalized learning ends up becoming diminished. Intentionally, I don't believe it was intentional at all. However, that is what has happened. In addition to that, there isn't enough time, and the reason why is because we do end-of-course testing before the end of the school year. And so, because we test before the end of the school year, the curriculum must be completed before the end of the school year. However, that's not the intention of what the curriculum is. Therefore, we want it to go 180 days. We don't want it to be shortened because of the end-of-course. And so, that's something that the commissioner needs to work with others as far as making it better understandable for what the end-of-course purpose is, being STAR tests. That is what is hurting, I think, our stakeholders in regards to understanding the intentions of the of the curriculum. If our end of course test didn't happen in April, when the end of the school year is at the end of May, then we have more room to teach. In addition to that, we're not stressing over all of these tests that we have to give and take. And time is interrupted by all of these other things that the state requires. And so do we have enough time to teach the curriculum? No. Would I love for it to be more, more broad? Absolutely. And I feel like the new TEACs that were implemented two years ago are taking a step in that direction. You can find verbiage in those TEACs that state along the lines of like, you must teach these things and these are examples of things that you could teach, right? So it's getting there. One TEAC redesign at a time.
You brought this up, so let me ask this question. Everybody, this is a nonpartisan issue. Everybody hates the STAR exams, right? There's always criticism of the STAR exams. Parents hate it, kids hate it, you know, and I'm sure you, you know, get a lot of criticism. What? What should we do if we don't have some accountability? And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to throw myself out there that I, that I will probably be hated for. I actually think the STAR exams were a good idea. And, you know, Rod Page told me for an interview I was doing with him. He said, you know, what happened was no child left behind, all of that came out, and then nine 11. And suddenly the world's, the nation's focus changed and we got away from that whole, the best way to do it. And kind of just what happened continued to happen. So what are your thoughts on the STAR exams? And I'm not asking you to like throw yourself out there and throw yourself under the train. But I mean, there has to be a happy medium between testing and accountability and the the demands that the STAR has made on teachers, students and parents. Is that a fair question?
Sure. I'm, I'm not a good politician. I'll always tell you what I think so that take, get ready. So yeah, I agree with you. I haven't met anyone who likes the STAR. That said, State Board of Education, we have very limited authority. We've talked about this. It's mostly the commissioner and that's the state legislature's decision to give the commissioner the power over assessment and not the State Board. So that said, no one likes the STAR, but everyone wants assessment and accountability, or most people I talk to want assessment and accountability. And there's three reasons for that for me. One is, is a campus failing or is a teacher failing the entire classroom or is an individual student failing? And each of those would have a different intervention depending on how, how big or how wide is the problem. I like there's a new pilot under a Senate bill recently where instead of doing one giant test in April, why don't we do a bunch of little tests? And I think that makes a bunch of sense to have a monthly 30 minute test check in. My district does map testing. I know many districts do map testing. What map testing is, what level are you reading at? What level are you doing math at? And that gives the teacher a lot of information. We could do the same thing with the STAR, have a month worth of instruction, then do a quick check in. Did the kids absorb? Do they pick it up? Does little Johnny or little Susie need some help in a particular area? I think that would be good for the teacher checking in and checking progress. The, the assessment accountability, the best way to do that, I think that's an open question. Like you said, no one likes the STAR, but I haven't heard any, I haven't heard another silver bullet. So maybe the legislature will take it up this session, but I'm, I'm open to those conversations and had them with some legislatures.
So standardized testing is a necessary evil. Federally, according to ESSA, every student succeeds act. Of course, I can't think of what the acronym is, but according to ESSA, which is the federal came after no child left behind. In high school, we need to test students once on reading and math and once in a science. In high school in Texas, we teach or we test them once in biology, once in algebra one, once in English one, once in English two, and once in US history. That's five tests. According to ESSA, we could also use tests like the SAT or ACT to use in place of those state tests. I don't think that we should eliminate standardized testing. I do think that we should eliminate the amount of standardized testing. Mr. Hickman brought up the, the monthly test. That's great. In fact, districts already do that across the state of Texas in the form of benchmarks and, and quarterly summative exams and campus common assessments. We already test regularly. And so that is part of the problem. Those tests end up taking instructional time away from the students because we are trying to monitor and see where they will fall at the end of course exams. And so do I think we need to eliminate STAR testing? If we want to keep a state test, great, that's fine. I do think we need to minimize the amount of testing that we are doing. And I was speaking with a colleague actually not too long ago, and he brought up the idea that really testing should be the same. It should be the same kind of test. We start you at a kindergarten level and we work you up even as a sophomore and a senior and see where you fall. And that is one test a year in all contents. And that would be better for gauging where our students actually fall, where their deficits might be so that we can fine tune and personalize that learning if we had a test like that. But do we? No. So what are we comparing ourselves to? Why are we using these standardized tests to compare ourselves to other states when the tests don't necessarily line up? How are we actually able to compare ourselves to see where we fall nationally if our tests don't line up and we are over testing our students?
Well, both are both great, great answers to a tough and I think kind of a rambling question. So I want to appreciate, I want to appreciate, I want to say that I appreciate you for answering that, even though, as you said, you know, it's not really a State Board of Education. Some that, but, but as parents and as people involved with education, I just wanted to get your, your bearing on that. And so Will Hickman and Rebecca Plurid, I want to thank you. We do have another candidate who is running for State Board of Education District Six, and we want to give them some time to talk. And that is Michelle Palmer, and she previously wasn't able to be here tonight. And so I offered her the opportunity to do a Zoom interview with me. Now, it's, she, she didn't have as much time because we didn't know how much time exactly we were going to have. So it's about a 12, 15 minute, 12 to 13 minute interview. And so we're going to go ahead and play that right now, if you don't mind. So here is a discussion with Michelle Palmer, also a candidate for State Board of Education District Six. Michelle Palmer, I want to thank you for joining us here on Conversations with a Candidate with the Houston League of Women Voters tonight. Let's talk a little bit about your candidacy. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. Well, as you said, my name is Michelle Palmer and I am a history and government teacher in the Houston area. And I am, have been a public education advocate for a long time, testifying before the state legislature and advocating for more funding, more special education funding, all kinds of things. And in 2018, I was looking at the eighth grade US history curriculum. And I found some questionable standards in there and started looking around and discovered that the State Board of Education was who approves new, new curriculum, new standards. And there looked to see who was running, who was the current person and so forth, and ended up announcing at the beginning of 2019 that I was running, ran for the 2020 race. And then when I came so close, decided to, to give it a try again. And, and that is, that is me.
Thank you. You kind of touched on this, but why is the State Board of Education important to you? And what made you decide to seek a seat on the SBOE?
I always kind of joke that the State Board of Education is the most important position you've never heard of when I'm speaking before a crowd, because most of them haven't. And as a teacher, I have kind of spent the last almost four years now trying to educate the people of the district, but also of the rest of Harris County, because I speak to people all over the county, about what the State Board of Education does and why it is so incredibly important. As for why I am running, I am running because there are several problems in not just the social studies curriculum, but also the health curriculum, the science curriculum. I, I want to depolitize it a little more than it already has been. You're probably aware that 10 years ago, the State Board of Education was a, a running joke, so much so that a documentary was made about them called The Revisionaries, because they like to revise history and, and science. They have gotten better. A lot of their power got taken away during that time by the state legislature. But I am, I'm running because I, I want to see changes made that are historically valid in the history curriculum, scientifically valid in the science curriculum. I would like to see the, the teaching of consent in our health curriculum because we have such a high rape rate in the state of Texas. And a lot of that is date rape, right? And people that do not understand that having sex with someone who is unconscious or who is inebriated is, is still, is still rape. So I would like to, to see the people of Texas protected a little more by making sure everyone understands exactly what consent is, how to, how to make sure you have actual consent, what it isn't, and, and so forth. So in addition, my opponent took climate change out of the standards after he was, after he won the 2020 election. And I would like to make sure that climate change science is in the science, the high school curriculum, because the students of today and tomorrow are the ones that are going to have to solve the problem that our generation has caused and generations before us. And they aren't going to be able to do that if they don't understand the science behind climate change. So those are some of the reasons I am running.
So there are 15 members on the State Board of Education and each district is roughly divided to about 2 million residents each. So how can you represent such a large district?
I'm not sure anyone can effectively represent such a district, but I am and will try even more when I am elected. I attend school board meetings of various districts in the, within the district. I speak to people all the time in community groups and things like that, and I will continue doing that. I mean, while running for office, I have spoken to a lot of public education advocates, as well as parent groups, PTAs, school boards, as I said. And I think that you have to continue doing that while you are elected. It is a non-paying position and, you know, it is a little frustrating that Texas doesn't think that education is important enough to pay people in educational governance, but they don't. And I'm willing to do the work to continue making sure that people have their voice heard. I would definitely do town halls and things like that, especially when whatever subject we are looking at the standards of that year. I want to make sure that everyone hears that, has their voice, can't travel to Austin or cannot be on, at the time of the meeting on a virtual, and, and virtually testify. You still deserve to, to have your voice heard, even if you can't do those things. And I want to make sure that I provide a sounding board for those people.
Okay, thank you. Now, one of the responsibilities of the SBOE members is oversight of the $56 billion permanent school fund. In 2019, the Houston Chronicle reported several problems with how the fund was run and the legislature approved the creation of a new management system. So what will you do as an SBOE member to safeguard the permanent school fund?
Well, I think that as a public education advocate, one of my biggest issues is transparency and accountability within anywhere that tax dollars are, are being used. And I believe that we need to make sure that every decision we make regarding the largest permanent school fund in the country is the right decision. We need to completely take any politics out of it and nobody's good old boy friend needs to be in charge of it. It needs to be professionals at all times. We need to constantly look at what decisions are being made about the management of the permanent school fund and make sure there are audits when there need to be audits and so forth. So I definitely think it's incredibly important, especially because, as I said, it is the largest permanent school fund in the country.
Okay, thank you. This next question you kind of alluded to earlier, but one of the perhaps most public responsibilities of the SBOE is approval of the public school curriculum every decade. And in 2010, as you pointed out, the SBOC received a lot of controversy and scrutiny over its hearings on science and technology and social studies revisions. So this past summer, the SBOE took up some revisions on the social studies curriculum, including revising the inclusion of history across elementary and middle school classes. How important is this role of curriculum oversight? And how will you work with the other 14 members from across the state in this sometimes controversial curriculum review?
Well, as you can imagine, as a history teacher, this is incredibly important to me. I have not read all of the proposed changes on all of the various grade levels to the social studies standards that were created by the work groups. I have read many of them, especially the high school and, and middle school. And there were some really good changes in there. There were some okay changes in there and there, I do not, however, like the new structure of the, the order of the classes. I, I feel like it is putting, I don't know, it, it just doesn't flow well for somebody who's been teaching history for a while. And I would like to, to see that change. I would like to see US history particularly have a little more time, even if it's only one semester, because I think there needs to be more African American, Mexican American, Native American, Asian American and women history included in the required social studies curriculum. I love that the Mexican American, African American studies courses exist now, and I love that they're looking at an Asian American course, but those are all electives at this point. And I feel like the history of every group of people that helped to build this country needs to be a little more included than it currently is in the US history curriculum. And every one of my students and the students of all of Texas need, should be able to see themselves and their history in the history class. I'm not sure what I think about the fact that they pushed off the changes for three years. I didn't like the, the order of the flow of the classes that they had changed. I like that there's more inclusivity. I like that there's more inclusivity in some of the changes that the work groups and the social studies change, course changes were coming up with. I think that every student in Texas deserves to see themselves and their history reflected in the curriculum and in the standards that they are learning. I love the new Mexican-American studies and African-American studies courses. They're fantastic. I like the proposed Asian-American studies course. I think that somebody's going to knock it out of the park with creating that. But those are electives. And US history, Texas history, world history, those are requirances. And they should reflect the students of Texas, which are more and more not just white students. I think we saw a study come out just this summer that white is no longer the majority in Texas. And so the history should reflect the, the amazing diversity that is this state.
All right. Michelle Palmer, thank you very much. And with you and the other candidates, we wish best wishes in your campaign for state board of education. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. And so I want to thank all the candidates who came out tonight. Michelle Palmer via video, Rebecca Plourd, and Will Hickman for coming out and answering our questions here on Houston Media Sources Conversations with the Candidates. I'm Gene Prost with the Houston League of Women Voters. I want to tell you what we've got coming up for you the rest of the month. We're, we're going to be having a show every Thursday evening from 6:30 to 7:30. And of course, tonight was state board of education, District Six. Thursday, October 20th, next week, we're going to have state board of education, District Eight. And we'll also be looking at the county commissioners races. We have two Harris County commissioners' seats who are up for election, Precinct Two, which the candidates there are Adrian Garcia and Jack Mormon. On Thursday, October the 27th, we're going to have county commissioner, Precinct Four. And the candidates in that race are Leslie Barionas and Jack Kegel. We also have a brand-new district as a result of redistricting. You know, every 10 years because of the federal census, we redistrict, we re-apportion based upon how that census reveals the population, the demographics and whatnot. And of course, there's many factors. And if you were watching the news last year, you knew that there were some lawsuits. And there's always changes as a result of redistricting. And so we do have a new US seat open here in Houston, in West Houston. And that's US House Seat 38. The candidates, we have three candidates up for that. Duncan Klosman, Joel Dejean, and Wesley Hunter running. And we've extended invitations to all three of those candidates for Thursday, October 27th. We also, on Thursday, November the 3rd, we have scheduled a conversation with the candidates. Now, that's normally the time we have set aside for the League of Women Voters Public Affairs Public Access Program, which is a show where we talk with people from around the community, sometimes elected officials, sometimes people with nonprofits or other people who are making news or have concerns that we will discuss either about politics or other issues that affect the community. And so normally that's the first Thursday of every month from 6:30 to 7:30. But coming up on the 3rd, we've set aside time and we're still waiting to hear from the candidates for Harris County Judge. And as soon as we get that scheduled, that is, that is on the books for Thursday, November the 3rd. And well, you're not going to be hearing me ramble the whole time, thankfully. We do have some other members of the League of Women Voters who are going to be stepping in and helping to ask questions. So you'll see, you'll see me a little bit, but you know, I've got one of those faces that were made for radio. So we'll also have some people with the league, league president, hopefully, and past presidents and some members of the Rising Stars Organization, which is our leadership training. I do want to talk about the Voters Guide. That's one of the things that the Houston League of Women Voters is known for. League of Women Voters across the United States, every year, we publish a Voters Guide. And the guide is where we send out questionnaires to candidates. And then we repost and make available their responses to questions that concern their district or their race and their candidacy. The Voters Guide is now available online. You can find it at l w v houston.org. That's our website, l w v houston.org. You can also go to the league's Vote 411 website, 411.org. And there you'll also find information about voting, what you need to do to make sure that you're eligible to vote. If you haven't already registered, I think the deadline has already passed. But if you are registered to vote, to make sure, what do you need to bring with you? What kind of information? And who's going to be on your ballot? You can find sample ballots there as well. So all that information is available. L W V Houston. Our Facebook page also has links to the 411 app and to l w v.org. So for the League of Women Voters of Houston, I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm Mario Salinas with the League. I'm Gene Prost. Thank you for watching and have a good evening.